I'm going to get money. But it's all stolen.
This is true. I mean, he does. She said, don't take her shit. Do you know what I'm saying? I think that's part of your right. Tomorrow. So it's better to, like, if I do that first thing. Right?
Yeah.
As though, I don't know Joe.
Ouch.
I don't have to say it.
It's just that.
And this is.
And you're questioning.
And you're questioning.
We're silent.
Come on.
There's one.
Come on.
There's one.
Oh.
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 Yeah.
I don't know Joe.
Ouch.
Oh.
Oh.
Do you?
Ouch.
I don't have to say it.
It's just that.
Yes.
And you're questioning.
Yes.
You're questioning.
We're silent.
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 But this is.
Taxes.
Yes.
And you're questioning.
Yes.
And you're questioning.
Yes.
You're bringing up.
We're silent.
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 Come on.
There's one.
There's one.
There's one.
Oh.
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 Okay. Nice. Thank you. I'm going to call to order the regular city council meeting in City Seabrook, November 7th. That is 6:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge of the public's rights and privacy. The United States of America. The Constitution. 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 The Constitution.
Okay. Item 1.1, public comments and announcements. At this time, we would like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes. For each speaker shall be limited to city business or city-related business or matters of general public interest and shall not include any personal attacks. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly in the microphone before making your comments. Kylie Wilson.
I got my cheater readers on, and I apologize. I've lost my voice, but I'm calling to, I'm here today to talk about the presentation 2.3 with regards to at-large animals. I'm actually going to be a character witness for my neighbor tomorrow in a court case. But I wanted to discuss the intent of that code, and what we feel is the interpretation and the intent is not being upheld. They're taking liberty in the way that that needs to be interpreted. So in the code, it says, "On the premises of the owner, any animal not confined to the premises." It does not get specifics on construction, height, type of. It also does not exclude invisible fences. My concern is the fact that that is being weaponized by an animal control officer that continues to go through our neighborhood. Many of us have half an acre to two, three acres of property, and this animal control officer is giving tickets for this. I fortunately have a chain link fence around my yard, so my dogs run free. My neighbor has an invisible fence, signs out, everybody knows that dog, they do not leave the premises, but they're getting violations for this while they're on the property with their dog. The concern I have is the precedents that this is setting is those that do not have a fence. What that means is if you stand in front of your front yard, Lake Point Forest, Seabrook Island, wherever, in your front yard with your dog, not on a leash, you are in violation according to the way this is being interpreted. That is not the interpretation. At-large animals roaming free of the neighborhood. I've got a dog in our neighborhood. I've never reported that dog. When I open my fence and I walk to my mailbox and my dog follows me and sits on my driveway, my dog is then at, my dog is considered at-large now based on the interpretation, and I could get a ticket because I've walked out of the confines of my property. My concern is that also is stating that that dog needs to be on the leash at all times, meaning you walk in your front yard or I walk on an acre of property and my dog has to go relieve themselves. I'm going to walk all the way to the back of my property for them to relieve themselves on a leash? It's not the interpretation and intent of what that code means. My concern is there's nothing in here that talks about it has to be in an enclosure. That has never been what it's about. An enclosure are dangerous animals. You can go look in this Texas State statutes. It talks about what is a dangerous animal, vicious, they're attacking people, property. But that is not the intent of what this code is, and that is not what these violations, they're being given for the wrong reasons. My neighbor, and she actually spoke on the last meeting, I could not be here, she was out on her property mowing her yard. Then the dogs were actually roaming on the property while her roommate had, her cousin had gone inside, and she gets a ticket. So my concern is if, if that is the intent of the code, and it is not, but if that's the way he's interpreting that or whomever is interpreting that, they can go to every single neighborhood with you standing in your front yard with your dog, and you are in violation. There is a precedence that does not need to be set. I completely understand. We have strays, we have at-large animals throughout this neighborhood. I have, most recently, I'm walking my dog, I'm actually going out to get my mail, my dogs stay in my fence line usually, and a dog that was roaming our neighborhood ran in my fence, and my dogs ran that dog out. That's the issue. Please relook at this. Please ensure that that is not being misused, and we're not giving tickets for at-large dogs on their premises. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Joanne Hutton.
Good evening, you all. I'm also here about that same issue. I'm also here about that same issue. My name is Joanne Hutton, and I reside at 2016-565 North in Mont Belvieu. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of my daughter and my niece, who reside at 2519 Logan Berry Circle in Seabrook, Texas. There are the owners of four dogs, two Labrador Retrievers, one Golden Retriever, and one Rescue Mutt. They were unable to attend this evening because they are both officiating high school volleyball playoff games. I'm here to address the issue of invisible fencing. First of all, I would like to know, are you all aware of what invisible fencing actually is?
We're not allowed to talk back and forth.
Okay. You're not allowed to talk back and forth. The dogs have a collar, and it has a device on it. If the dog gets near the underground fencing, he's shot. And it only takes one time to be shot, and they never go near that area again. It makes, it makes a little noise when they get near it, and that lets them know that they're near, and they go back. They never cross the fence. In fact, if you were to try to get your dog to walk across that area, they'd be pulling you the other way. Okay, I'm here to address the issue of the invisible, the invisible fencing. I'm aware that Seabrook Animal Control is going to give a presentation over this topic this evening and provide you with the information. I'm asking that before you make a ruling or make any changes on the ruling, that you do some research of the fences. Not all animals respond to the same fences. The fence that works for one dog may not work for another. As a responsible pet owner, it's up to the owner to find the best fit for their animals. We did a great deal of research and put effort, time, and money to ensure that our fencing system works for our animals and is in compliance with the ordinances as it is written. Before making a ruling or making changes to this ordinance, I implore you to take this into consideration. This is private property we pay taxes and insurance on and should be able to use for our animals. We have purple signs posted as well as signs posted that there is an invisible fence present. If you choose tonight to disallow or ban these fences, I would ask that you consider grandfathering these fences that are already in existence. I have had these fences since 2019 and have never had a complaint for the dogs being off of my property. I have only had three complaints, and they all come from our very own City Seabrook Animal Control for dogs, being on my property and not recognizing my fencing system. They were in their yard but not on leashes or chains. If the intent of this ordinance is to keep animals from running amok, we are doing this. With our underground fencing system, we only have the dogs running loose in our yards when we are at home. The City of Seabrook is going to allude to the exposure part of the ordinance, which states that fences or pins must have a minimum dimension of five feet, 10 feet, and must be such height as to prevent entry of young children. If this is the private property and we pay taxes and we have it posted, we believe that we should be able to use our property reasonably. And there have never been any neighbor to have an issue with one of our animals being out, and I appreciate very much your letting me explain this to you.
Thank you very much. 2.1, presentations. Presentation of the final report. Oh, I'm sorry. 1.1. Go ahead.
I forgot to. Upcoming events here in the City of Seabrook. Monday is Veterans Day, 11/11, and coincidentally, at 11:00 AM at the Bay Area Veterans Memorial, there will be a short ceremony there. Rotary is bringing hot dogs again. We look forward to seeing you there. The next big event, oh, well, I'll leave that one for later. Clear Creek Community Theater Broadway Cabaret will be at the Community House right behind us Friday, Friday through Sunday, November 22 to 24. The, those are, showtimes are Friday the 22nd in the evening at 7:30, and Saturday, Sunday at 2:00 PM in the afternoon, and one additional show Saturday night at 7:30. Tree lighting is Thursday, December 5th at 6:00 PM. Get that on your calendar, right across the road from us here at the Community House. Saturday, December 7th, Casey Donahue will be at Barge 295. And there's two things on Saturday, December 14th. Breakfast with Santa is from 9:00 to 11:00 here in the Community House. Rotary will be cooking pancakes there. And that evening, go see the 63rd Annual Christmas Boat Lane Parade. It's right down the middle of the lake. It's always fun to watch. Go out and take a look at that. Is there anything I have missed?
Anybody else, counsel? Thanks, Rob. Okay, now 2.0, presentations. 2.1, presentation of the final report by the Charter Review Commission.
Hello there. Ann Whacker on the vice chair. I believe you've all had an opportunity to review the report, and I'm just here to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have questions on the, on the report?
I do.
Jackie?
Everything looked pretty good, in my opinion, except, I mean, it seems like you're just trying to clarify a lot of wording, but the recall. Okay, we either are going to do recalls or we're not going to do recalls, but the way this is worded, it seems like everything, it's going to be nearly impossible to recall someone unless they are mentally impaired or they criminally, do a criminal offense. Not, it's not like the will of the people, which I think, I mean, if we're going to do recalls and allow recalls, we should allow more than all of these exact, very specific worded-out reasons.
I appreciate that. That's one of the two topics that we studied quite a lot, and we examined a lot of information of various jurisdictions and what they have or they don't have. And what we had learned was, as presently written, as currently written, it really doesn't have anything at all, and that can actually lead to a lot of issues on, and that lead to time and money of the city to address. You know, one example was given of somebody initiated a recall petition against a city official because they said they didn't return their phone call quick enough. So we were given some language to look at, and this is what we came up with to address the issue.
I also looked at some languages for other cities, and this is very, very more, this is above and beyond than my, I mean, it is. I mean, you could still sum this down, but I mean, if you're reading it, you know, word for word, basically what I just told you is if you're meant, you know, mental, mental, what does that say? You have a mental, serious mental or physical defect that, and then also basically if you have to commit a crime. But that's not, you know, other people will have, you know, just incompetence or inefficiency, public loss, public interest or loss of trust. There's, I mean, there could be, this just needs to be shortened, in my opinion, but everything else looks great.
Well, I think we tried to limit it to, like, like it said, noncompliance with the charter, that we did tie that back to the code of conduct for the charter. I guess what some people may not like is that if there's just a decision that's unpopular or unwise, but that is just something that we thought this covered most of the main things that you should be recalled for. It was just a group decision that we, that we discussed, and this is what the language was, that we came up with, suggested to us, and that was our group decision.
And I appreciate everything you all have done and the time you've spent on this, but I'm, and I'm just saying, if we're trying to get to this past and voted for, I don't know that it's the best way to present it. Is there a way to change this, or is this up for discussion? I mean, can we amend anything at this point?
So not tonight. Tonight is just to accept the report as, to make comments if you have questions about what they've been stating. You have, you will have an opportunity at a later point when you call the election for, to actually put these on the ballot, then that would be a time when you could adjust language.
Okay, because aren't we approving this later tonight?
No, we're just approving.
You're just accepting.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Okay.
But yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you. Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, item 2.2, certificates of appreciation for the Charter Review Commission. So come on up. Okay, please join me in recognizing the contributions of the members of the Charter Review Commission for the City of Seabrook, who have dedicated the past six months to an important, important challenge and task. As many of you know, the Charter Review Commission plays a crucial role in ensuring that our city's growing or governing document evolves to meet the changing needs of our community. This team invested their time, energy, and expertise to examine our charter, engage in thoughtful discussions, and propose amendments that will better serve our residents. Each of these members have made a significant sacrifice to attend meetings, conduct research, and engage with the public, all while balancing their personal and professional commitments. Your efforts have truly made a difference, and I hope you carry the recognition as a reminder of the impact you have made on the city. So everybody, please join me in applauding the members of the Charter Review Committee.[1647.83][1647.83][applause] Okay, 3.0, the consent agenda. 3.1, approve. Oh, I'm sorry, we still have the other presentation. I'm sorry. 2.3, presentation of City Seabrook Animal Control regarding invisible fences. Chief?
Mayor, counsel, good evening. We were asked to go over the invisible fence ordinance, so I'm going to let our animal control supervisor, Dwayne Vanclos, explain that to you guys and answer any questions you have, because he's much more versed in that than I am.
Mayor, city council, good evening. I actually printed the specific parts of the ordinances concerning what, what the discussions have been about, and 10-1 covers all of our definitions, but I printed out the definition of on premises of owner. Any animal not confined to the premises of the owner by some Any animal not confined to the premises of the owner by some physical means of sufficient height, strength, length, and/or manner of construction to preclude the animal from leaving the premises of the owner. Confined, and confinement includes confined within a building, house, structure, or within a fenced yard or premises so that the animal cannot escape from the building, house, structure, or fenced yard or premises without human assistance. And I included that enclosure means a house, a building, or fenced area as further described in Section 10-6. And if we could go to the next slide. The next slide is, of course, explaining what an enclosure is, and it says, "For the purpose of this chapter to qualify as an enclosure, the fenced area or pen must have minimum dimensions of five feet by 10 feet, must be of such height as to prevent entry of a young, of young children, or escaped by jumping by the animal, must be locked and secured such that the animal cannot climb, dig, or otherwise escape of its own volition, shall be securely locked at all times, must have secure sides to prevent an animal from escaping from the enclosure, and must provide protection from the elements of the animal contained therein." And then my last slide, when I was researching for the presentation, I went out and around the city. And as you'll see here, Baytown, La Porte, League City, Pearland, and Sugar Land, as well as Friendswood, all have very similar, if not exactly the same wording that we have. Friendswood has the same exact wording, requiring a physical means to prevent a dog or an animal from, from leaving their property.
So, questions, council?
Yeah, so, I would think a underground fence would mean physical way to keep the dog. So, here's my thing, I've had, I got two experiences. One, animal control officer back in the early 80s tried to feed my dog to get it out of the yard to give it a ticket. That got changed after I came to court, and I won, because the jury said, "Why are you to the animal control officer? Why are you trying to feed his dog to entice it out of the yard to give it a ticket? That's wrong." In 2001, my son was attacked by a pit bull, and his quick thinking saved his life, because this dog was going to kill him. The dog was put down that same day. The dog jumped over a six-foot fence, broke the top of it, came out. My son was riding a bike, and he laid down and put the bike over him, and the dog attacked the bike instead of my son. Pretty, pretty quick thinking. My point, though, is, so, there's been the two issues right there. One, someone trying to entice the dog out, and the dog was perfect where it was, and I got a ticket, I got out of it. And then a dog that was in an enclosure that broke out and attacked my son. So, I think, and I've known about electric fences for a long time, they have them on farms, they have them all over the place, and if it keeps the dog in, I think it's almost like, in my opinion, it's just like you're creating an issue. Instead of, hey, these dogs are staying, and it's not creating an issue, why make it an issue? It's like you're, in my sports analogy, it's like, let's go find a penalty, instead of let it come to me. It's not creating a problem, so I don't see why we're going after someone who has a electric fence underneath the ground. Then, if someone wants to interpret, interpret these words to be exact, then we need to change the way we word it, and just put, we allow underground electric fences, or electric fences and all that. So, that's my two cents.
If a, if a dog comes in their yard, because of electric fence, he doesn't have the collar, right?
Right.
If someone invaded it. But does the city have any liability at all? Or does that, the liability is on the person who owns, that has the dog?
Yes.
Or the person who is at the house? So, the city doesn't have any liability?
I don't believe so. That, that would be the city attorney.
And the point I'm making is, is that if it's an electric fence, you know, the only problem I have with electric fences is you can't tell if it's broken.
Right.
You can't tell that, and you can't, you can't keep dogs from coming in.
Sure.
But in certain circumstances, if they have a, a, a electric fence that works properly, I don't see any reason why we couldn't change the ordinance to be able to accept electric fences. I, I, but my concern is, is who's going to be liable for it if it happens? And really, it is on the dog's owner, and it is.
I believe, I believe it would be the property owner.
Okay, thank you. I just want.
Sure. Rob?
That's, thank you, Tom. My concern with it is more dogs, coyotes, kids wandering past the electric fence. Yes, it'll keep the dog in, as long as it's well-maintained, it'll keep the dog in. And from the inside out, absolutely don't have an issue with it. If, I would expect it would, it would be insurance implications, for the same reason that we have to put a fence around a pool that's contained within a backyard. You still have to have a fence around it, or you can't get insurance. There may be insurance implications for it, but as long as the city doesn't have any liability on it, I'm not sure that we have any place getting too involved with it. I wouldn't object to updating the language to allow that. But again, that depends on liability to the city. If, for example, a dog is contained in his own front yard by an electric fence, and a five-year-old wanders across and gets bit, and then that five-year-old's parents comes back and says, "Hey, city, your ordinance allowed this." So, making sure that we're protected as a city is my only concern. As far as keeping the dogs in, absolutely agree it works, no issues at all. I would consider changing that pending that legal question.
Mike?
Yeah, same thing with all what you guys have said as well. But if I'm going to issue a ticket, I guess my question is, would I know the boundaries? If they have a fence that's underground, then I need to know that if I'm going to issue a ticket, and if I know where the boundaries are and those dogs are there, then, then I think, maybe we just need to educate our folks. Or if somebody, this is just a suggestion, I'm not trying to make more things, but if I'm going to have a fence, I'm going to come to you guys and let you know that I have an underground fence, and make sure, here's my boundaries. I don't need to pay anything, I don't want to, I don't want the resident to pay anything, just something so you know, if you come to my neighborhood, I don't have a fence, but I have an underground fence for my dogs, and I want you to witness, watch my dogs go here, 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 this is my barricade, and so, if you ever come to this neighborhood, you guys have it documented, whoever it is, it's on record that they have the underground fence, that way you know.
Sure.
So, that's just my opinion, but, you know.
Have we ever had, or have you ever had, an incident where something has happened badly with an invisible fence?
That came off of a dog we picked up off of the street.
I'm not sure.
It's an invisible fence collar. It went right through the fence. Wednesday of last week on Dolphin, we had a German Shepherd had a invisible fence collar. He had a wooden fence and an invisible fence, because he was knocking down the wooden fence. So, they put the invisible fence up to keep him from getting to the fence. He went right through both fences, and when the neighbor tried to put him back in the property, it shocked him, and he took off. So, the following day, we attempted to put him back on his property, and it shocked him again, and we had to take him to the shelter. We had to remove the collar and take it to the shelter. So, yes, the fences do work, but if you do your research, most of the time, they're saying 65 to 75% effective. And, and I understand it's a fence. I understand that wooden fences can be knocked down, dogs can dig under fences. You see something physical with that. You see the missing planks, you see the hole. When this happens, you see nothing. When the battery dies, you don't know it's not working. When the electricity is off, you don't know it's not working. There's no physical sign that the fence is down.
I have another question. So, I just heard what you said, you, did you find that on the ground?
No, no. This came off of a dog.
Okay, when you, when you originally said, you pulled it out of your pocket, and you said you found this, then I heard you say you took it off.
On a dog.
Okay, well.
On a dog.
Right, okay. I see what you're saying. Yeah, okay, I thought.
I don't pick up collars off of the.
Yeah, I thought you said you picked it off the ground. Okay, now I understand, but, but anything can fail, like you say, the fence can fail, the electricity could go out, I get it, you know, but, again, in these, these trainers that use these, especially with hunting dogs, because that's where they're mostly used, is hunting dogs, rarely have I ever heard of an issue with them, but usually hunting dogs are very smart, wise, and they understand their owner. But anyhow, I'm all for this, so, I think it's a good thing, and I kind of want to stay away from ticketing people on their own land. That's, it's almost like you did something in your, like, you know, you're mowing your grass, and someone doesn't like the way you mowed it, and you're going to get a ticket? It's just too much for me. I'm, if their, their dogs are on their own land, and they're not getting off, and they're not a nuisance, it'll leave them alone, in my opinion.
Hey, Tom. I've heard what everybody says, I think everybody's got a valid point, including you, Dwayne. And I really think we probably need to revisit the ordinance. I can understand, Dwayne, why you were unfortunate, because it's pretty, you know, specific. You've got to have a fence, it's got to be there, something you can touch, feel, and smell. I can understand what the property owners are saying about it, it's an effective thing. I think what we probably need to do is sit down, revisit the ordinance, and see if we can do it. My concern would be, is if somebody inadvertently walks on the property and gets attacked. However, you know, that's up to parents, everybody else, and property owners to just, you know, make notification, "Hey, stay on my property."
Sure.
Whatever it may be. But I think really to resolve this, let's, let's sit down and kind of go over the wording, and give you some clarification going forward, give the property owners some clarification on what they need.
We, we did seek clarification prior to citations being issued.
I understand.
And, and the, the word that was questioned was physical. And so, it was confirmed that the fence was not physical, so that's why we went forward with citations.
Right.
Because we were told that.
I understand, and I just think, you know, as technology evolves, we have to.
Sure.
So, that would be my suggestion, is let's kind of reword it. Also, I would like to know, when I put this on the agenda, I'd never heard of an underground fence. I knew about electric fence, if you touched it, yes.
Right.
Because being stupid teenager, "Oh, you think this hurts?"
Sure.
So, I've got firsthand knowledge, but just the effectiveness of it, I didn't know. And that may be one of the things, too, that we bring to the table when we're sitting about rewording this.
Okay.
Is how effective it is from an industry standard.
Sure.
Who gave you the definition? Who did you refer to? Who are you speaking about?
The prosecutor.
Bob?
Yes.
Tom. Tom.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I think, the way I read this, maybe Bob sees it another way, but I mean, it really is not, it's a gray area, in my opinion, because it's saying, you know, it needs to be confined to the premises, which it is, but it's, it's not an enclosure at all, so it's still referring to, anyways, I think that I agree, we need to revisit the ordinance. I don't think, I hope that this person does not, the tickets do not get pursued at the moment. I mean, not all fences are, you know, foolproof, like, you know, but I'd hate to see this, this lady get penalized for, for this, at this point, with the way this ordinance is written.
Yeah, I totally agree, Jackie.
I got one other point. Is it possible you could work with us on, on working up an ordinance that may have the homes have to be, we have to know that they have an underground, a sign of some sort, demarcation possibly, in the corners of that, maybe something that would give you an opportunity, or whoever's enforcing, an opportunity to know there is a fence there.
Right.
And somehow, that has to be registered along with the dog registration. Maybe that would be an opportunity at that point to add that to the ordinance. So, maybe we could take a look at that.
Sure. Thank you.
I thought, I think with the fence, though, it isn't a recommend, doesn't it come with the four flags to go in the corners?
It has signs.
A sign and, and the little flags.
The, the signs were actually put up after the citations were issued.
And your request.
Yeah, but I think, I think the manufacturers of the equipment include flags for the corner. Okay.
It's an A rock piece of property.
Yeah, I understand. But there is indication that there's a.
Tom, we, we all seem to be in violent agreement that it's appropriate to review the verbiage of this ordinance, and see if it is worthwhile to change it to directly address electric fences. Again, the liability to the city is my biggest concern, and obviously, it should be marked as, as such, but let's.
How can Bob say that electric is not physical?
At this point, it doesn't matter.
Actually, it does, they have court tomorrow.
We're going to ask city staff to review it.
Yeah, we can't answer that question, Joe. We don't know. All right, why did Bob say that? That's a question of Bob.
I make a motion, we get rid of Bob.
It's not on the agenda. I agree. Okay, do I hear a motion? Or do we, we want to give the, we have to give the council, council direction.
Oh, presentation, sorry.
We want to give council direction.
Oh, I thought Rob did. I was just trying to get into conversation and give the staff their guidance.
Correct, I'll second Rob's recommendation.
And see what we can do to better accommodate our, our citizens and the way they're doing things, and still protect the city from any liability that might be incurred.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you. 3.3, approval of a second reading of ordinance 2024-25.
We're going, we're starting in consent.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We were in presentation, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Consent. 3.1, approve the minutes of the June 27, 2017, and October 15, 2024, city council meetings. 3.2, approval of the second reading of ordinance 2024-26, the master fee schedule update, and ordinance amending the code of the City of Seabrook to update appendix B entitled Master Fee Schedule. By updating and amending parks and recreation fees, animal control and shelter fees, and utility fees, making findings of facts, revealing, repealing and replacing all references to such fees and charges in all ordinances or resolutions in conflict therewith, this ordinance providing for severability and providing for notice and effective date. 3.3, approval of a second reading of ordinance 2024-25, revision to the personal policies, Chapter 8, Section 5, electronic communications. An ordinance of the City of Seabrook Texas amending the City of Seabrook personnel policies, Chapter 8, employee communications, Section 5, electronic communications, by adding to this section prohibitive technologies and making various findings and provisions related to the subject.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. 4.0, boards and commissions, consider and take all appropriate action on the reappointment of Sue Tomy, Glenn Helvisson, and Terry Moore to the Board of Adjustment Building Standards Commission.
Move to approve 4.1.
With terms to expire on January 1, 2027.
Okay, now, move to approve 4.1.
Second.
All in favor? Passes. 4.2, consider and take all appropriate action on the reappointment of Monica Camo, Sally Antrimus, John Cogashell, and Jesse Jones to the Open Space and Trails Committee, with terms to expire January 1, 2028.
Move to approve 4.2.
Second.
All in favor? Consider and take all appropriate action on four appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission, with one member's term to expire on January 1, 2026, and three members' terms to expire on January 1, 2028. Do we have, let me get the list.
This is the one that I asked Rachel if we could, there's so many candidates. Can we, like, go down the line and just say our top four?
We actually had the interviews conducted. And my understanding was that when we went to that program of interviewing, those who were interviewed have the opportunity to state their case on who it should be.
Right, I'm sorry. Yes, 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 sorry. But I'm sorry, I was getting ahead of myself on the boat.
Yeah, so, so who were the interviewees, interviewers?
There was nine.
Me. Could you give us your recommendations?
Joe, would you like to go first?
Yeah, no, you go ahead.
Okay, sounds great. There were nine applicants for a total of four positions. Three of those were reappointments. Of the three reappointments, none had served over a term, a little bit more than that, three or four years. It takes time to get knowledgeable about what goes on and really understand all the ins and outs. And I couldn't see a reason not to reappoint those that had been there. That left one position to fill. There's, there were some exceptionally good candidates. There were some exceptionally good candidates. But, you know, I have his name in front of me, but not his last name.
L E S A.
L E S A.
L E S.
Byron.
Kyle.
What's that?
Kyle Lasik.
Kyle Lasik.
I know, that's what, I've been back and forth on this. In my mind, there were two candidates that were dead heat, but for different reasons. The more I thought about it, building the bench matters. We cannot go wrong with either Kyle Lasak or Byron, and I can't remember his last name.
Hanson.
Either one is an absolutely exceptional choice.
Pick one.
Pick one. I did, Byron.
Okay. Joe?
I think I went with Kyle. And, but, you know, like I said, they're all really good, so.
So those are the recommendations, Kyle and Byron. What about the current members? Do you agree to keep the current members on the board?
Yeah, but there's only three of those. There's only three positions for current members. I thought originally Rob and I agreed on the same one, but I thought we agreed on Kyle originally.
Originally, we did. And I could be persuaded either way because both are exceptional candidates. And there's just, for different reasons. And I just didn't see a significant differentiator.
I think the original thing you were talking about was that his background in, is civil engineering or engineering.
Right, right. Kyle is a landman, hasn't been involved in government activities. Or he hasn't served on any government positions, I should say. His experience is presenting to P and Z or presenting to council to get something approved. So he brings a lot to the table in that he sees it from the other side of what's going on. He understands zoning and all that kind of stuff. On the other hand, Byron knows our master plan better than most of us do on council. He fully understands the zoning process. He has attended every meeting that we have from OST to council to P and Z to EDC. He's visited all of them. He has a solid understanding of how the process works and can intelligently discuss what our master plan is set to, how it's designed, and why. So you have that on one hand.
And that's him sitting back there right now.
Experience on the other. What's that?
That's him sitting back there right now, right?
Matter of fact, it is, yeah. But you have all the experience in the process on one hand, but a much more thorough understanding of this city and how it functions on the other. It's, there's not a bad choice between the two. I've changed my mind three times since we last talked, Joe.
All right. Does any, well, hang on. Does any, hang on. Does any other council member have any other nominations? Or recommendations? Okay. So it's between the two of them.
Is it Brian Anderson or Brian Hanson? Or Byron?
Byron Hanson.
Byron Hanson.
Byron.
Okay, well, majority vote.
So are we going to have to go back down to each person? Or is that, because I didn't.
That's the, well, I asked you, do you have another recommendation?
No, I'm just saying, is that what we're doing is?
Yeah.
Let's just do it too.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Just need a motion to see if it passes.
Either one on the other two.
Two motions, one to reappoint and then one to select.
So make the first motion.
I move to reappoint the three currently serving members whose terms are expiring on planning and zoning.
Second.
Who are they?
Ed Klein, Scott Reynolds, Guy Rogers.
Good. Do I hear a second?
He said.
All in favor? The three incumbents, okay. Now, we'll vote on Brian and Kyle. All in favor of Byron Hanson? Raise your hand. Kyle. Okay, Kyle, Kyle Lasik. Appreciate it. Okay, so Byron Hanson is our new appointee.
Mayor, if I may.
Do we, do we have, do we have a, Sean, is there an alternate on that board? No, no alternates.
How about doing that, then? Can we do that?
The terms for the new members are, one expires January 1, 2026, and the other three expire January 1, 2028. So you may want to identify which one.
Yes, that's a good, that's a good point.
The one that expires earlier.
That's a good point. So how many, do we know which ones expire?
So, do you?
Yes, I want, you need to let us know.
So the reappointments would probably be the 2028. And the new person would be filling the vacant position that would then expire and be up again in 2026.
Okay.
A year, a little over a year.
So that's filling Pika's position. Okay.
So if he screws them up, screws it up, we can fire him in our call, huh?
Okay.
So, and this goes to that question, and Sean was coming up. Can we put an alternate on?
If you.
I think by charter, it's got charter change.
Yeah, if you remember, we went, I think it was two years ago, and we went to each of the committees talking about alternates. And P and Z said, no, thank you. There were a couple that, I think, one or two that did. But the others said, no, thank you.
But I think charter precludes.
So the charter speaks specifically to the makeup of what the Planning and Zoning Commission is. And it doesn't speak to any alternates.
I remember that now.
And it's stated, it's actually, the makeup is by charter and by statute. So there's not an opportunity to create.
I wonder why, though? Because it, that would make sense because, you know, there's people who miss a meeting and you could have that backup step in. Kind of like an alternate juror. I don't get it.
It would require a charter amendment to cause that.
Then I'll make a motion in the future for that.
Okay, good.
And again, I would defer back to legal. I believe that state law states how you got the makeup of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And it doesn't create an opportunity for that.
Tom, mayor and council, this is ending three and a half years on council for me. And I've seen the struggles with filling these positions from way before that. I've never seen so many extremely qualified candidates or even so many candidates overall. I think it's a great thing for our city to have so many people come out. And there's several of these folks that we absolutely need to keep in touch with. We need to find them the opportunity somewhere. It's unfortunate that we only had one seat to fill tonight. But we could have placed three that were all great candidates.
Thank you, Rob. 5.0, new business. 5.1, present, consider, and take all appropriate action to accept the 2024 Charter Review Commission final report and propose recommendations for submission to the voters of Seabrook in accordance with the Texas Local Government Code. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve 5.1.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, I guess my discussion question is, this is the citizens' vote on this, correct?
Yeah, it may. I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Just to clarify, that was a motion to accept.
Yeah, motion, this is a motion to accept the report, not to approve the report. All in favor? Okay.
So this, we still have an opportunity to change the wording, the verbiage.
Yes, this is just to accept, accept their.
Okay. Okay.
Not to, not to send it to the voters tonight.
Do we need to clarify the vote? Because I didn't see.
It's unanimous.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
5.2, consider and take all appropriate action regarding the approval of an interlocal agreement between the city of Seabrook and Harris County Public Health granting authority to Harris County Public Health to conduct permitting and inspection activities related to the establishment of public swimming pools, spas, interactive water features, and artificial swimming lagoons under the county's public aquatic sanitation and safety program within the city's corporate limits and authorize the city manager to execute all associated documents. John?
So staff is recommending approval of this interlocal agreement. Currently, Harris County Public Health, they do all our health inspections throughout the city. And what this agreement is for is they won't be doing inspections for our private swimming pools. They'll permit those and do those. This is for our public swimming pool. So this is hotels and our apartment complexes. And it'll provide some additional authority. Their authorities are different than ours, being the health department. And if there is a situation where there's an instance that could affect public health, when they show up at the apartment complex or they show up at the hotel, they can shut down that pool immediately based on the authority they have as a health district. And so we want to be able to use that authority. And they're more than willing to participate. This is a, it's free of charges like our health services. I will have to come back before you and adopt some additional swimming pool ordinances if this is approved tonight. And I already have everything prepared, so I can bring it back. Have. But they're on, we're on a deadline if we want to do this because they want to be able to take this to commissioners' court before January to get approval so that it's all agreed to, so they can start in January. So again, it's staff's recommendation that council would approve this.
Okay. Any questions?
Move to approve 5.2.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. 5.3, consider and take all appropriate action on the amendment to the Public Safety Fund 2024 budget to approve an additional $29,980.36 for the funding of the control station radios utilized by the police department, emergency medical service, and a fire department. Kevin?
Mayor, council, Public Safety Committee has heard, considered, and approved the recommendation before you tonight for adding to the 2024 budget expenditures for the $29,980. The radios that are currently in place are 10-plus years old. They're at the end of life. If something happened to one of them, it would go down and that particular base station would not be operable to do public service.
Okay.
Staff's recommending approval.
Move to approve 5.3. Second.
No, the current one. No, we haven't gone to the 25. That's, that comes in January.
Aren't we fiscal?
The fiscal year begins October 1, regardless. So that budget, those dollars are being spent in 25.
Okay. Well, how about blankets for smoke signals?
We get that, too.
Well, that does need to be clarified a little bit.
Yeah.
We don't need for that budget till 25. So, to bring that forth to you, so, however.
So this is coming out of, out of the reserve fund for public?
Yes, sir.
Safety fund?
Yes, sir.
But it's going into the 24 budget, which is closed.
24 budget's already closed. According to the way we're.
When the city created the Public Safety Fund, they said that the budget would be approved at a separate time, which is January, than the rest of the budget. However, that's not really how finances work. So it gets, the budget is approved October 1, or as of October 1. So we're in the 25 budget. I was just making.
So is this just semantics? Do we can just change this to a 25? It's coming out of the same fund?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. 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 So, so when we make the, whoever makes the motion, make the change to 25, please.
Okay, I move to approve 5.3 to amend it that the funds will come out of the Public Safety Fund for 2025.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council.
5.4, consider and take all appropriate action on the approval of Resolution 2024-22, reestablishment of the Hotel Tax Advisory Board. Resolution of the city council of the city of Seabrook formally establishing the Hotel Tax Advisory Board in accordance with the Texas Local Government Code.
All right, mayor and council, from the last meeting, we put together a resolution to reestablish advisory boards to deal with the hotel tax funds that come in based on the comments that we had previously. The resolution was put together pretty standard to what we've had about 10 years ago. The board, just to kind of point out, to make sure that everyone on council is in agreement. The board composition, starting in section two, was delineated for clarification of the direction we're going. So right now, it states that we would have two council members, two lodging facility representatives, two citizens, and one city staff person, finance director or designated by the city manager. So this is structured to get a number of different people on the committee. We also did put in there that this would be not under the Open Meetings Act. So this wouldn't be subject to all of the same requirements that we have on all of our formal committees. There'd be a recommending body only to come back to city council. So they'd really have no powers minus what council has in their final direction. The rest of this is pretty standard. Duties and responsibilities would be to review and evaluate application from the entities that are requesting the hot funds, receive and review and evaluate the post-event presentation. So those presentations that the council is typically getting, trying to evaluate if they're meeting the guidelines of the hot funds, would be passed over to the committee. No expenditures of the hot revenues shall be made without prior approval of city council, again, advisory, and then any other function or duty that council would pass off to the board.
Move to approve 5.4.
Second.
I do have questions.
Me, too.
Good, Rob.
As an informal board, does it require a quorum to present an opinion to city council?
We did still put that a quorum would be required, yes.
Quorum would be required. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Would the, you said it won't be an open meeting act. I know it's still a recommending committee. But so would those be recorded? And would there be agendas put out? Or?
What we typically did before was we did still record and create. Record the votes. But it didn't have to go through the 72-hour posting. Record the votes, but it didn't have to go through the seventy two hour posting.
Yes, okay, okay, awesome. I, so I'd like to suggest that we, it doesn't show how many, how often they meet, but I would, quarterly, like?
So we left it pretty open, because they were just going to start looking at the applications. We didn't want to make sure that they had to meet monthly, so there's language in here as needed.
Okay. I was just looking at some other cities, and I, and I thought, I would like to just suggest if we could do two-year term limits and meet quarterly on there, or as needed, I guess, would be.
I would, I would guess probably as needed, because the hot funds are intricately tied to the budget approval cycle, and generally all falls, the submission timeline, all falls in the same.
In the fall.
Couple of months in the fall for the upcoming year. So they may not need to meet every, every quarter, but during that timeframe, they may need to meet six times in two months.
Right, okay, I agree with that.
Any, anything else? Anything else?
I think it's currently in here as a year, do y'all, how do y'all feel about two years? I mean, anything takes longer than a year to get, get to know what you.
Well, well, the applications pretty much come in just.
But I mean, the commission itself.
Oh, the commission itself?
Yeah.
So right now, on board composition, we have that each member will serve at the will of city council without a term, and may be removed or replaced at any time. So, it would be, there's not really a term specified right now.
Okay. I guess we can just see how this all works out. One more last question, the lodging representative. I noticed that that's on several other cities, maybe not two, but that would be a hotelier owner? And are we, do we have, you think two that's going to be willing to serve on this? Okay, you think, okay, all right, I just didn't know if we're going to have an issue getting, finding those people. Okay, well, yeah, I hope so, too. Okay, thank you.
And, and sometimes it's the hotel manager, not the owner.
Minor clarification, the two citizens are restricted from applying for hot taxes themselves, correct? And everyone involved in this committee cannot be associated with any entity requesting hot taxes.
Correct. I want to, if you would want us to put more specific language in there, it doesn't, I don't think it's that clear, so we could add that.
Right, three years ago, I resigned from a nonprofit board because they applied to the city for hot taxes.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So, if, if somebody's working directly with one of those organizations, they shouldn't be able to.
Okay. All right, do I hear a motion? Okay. Motion and second, all in favor? Thank you. Five point five, consider and take all appropriate action on a task order 202401 with Ardua LLC under the Professional Service Agreement for Hazardous Mitigation Grant Management Services for the preparation and grant applications for the Seabrook Early Warning System in the Nassau Waterline Relocation Projects, and the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute all associated documents.
Move to approve five point five.
Second.
Kevin? Could you explain the early warning system one more time?
So, we're looking to do the HNGP grant for early warning system. Not only would it encompass being able to warn for industry incidents, but we can also do an early warning for hazardous weather events, train derailments, stuff like that. The system we're looking at, I was hoping to have pricing back to move forward with submitting to TDM. We don't have it yet, but it's, it's a system similar to what Deer Park and Pasadena have. You can set it off all at once, you can isolate it to different zones, to where, if you just needed to do the north end of town because of an incident, we could be able to do that. You'd have multiple ways to set it off, one being dispatch, and then emergency management, city manager, whoever, could also operate it via phone if need be. So it's a, it's a quick, it, the system that I've heard of, it's a, it's, it's a quick system to be able to operate and utilize. Includes maintenance install, it's, there's a study that's coming out with the estimated cost of it.
So this is a wired system?
Yes.
How many of these are there going to be?
I don't know yet. That's supposed to come out with the study. So they have taken the topography and everything, weather, like we've talked about, summertime, winds are blowing out of the south, wintertime, they're coming out of the north. So, sound in determining the amount of sirens, type of sirens, the height, everything should come out with that study.
Okay. But this is only to prepare the, the, the grant application?
Correct.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Got a motion, second. All in favor? Thank you. Five point six, consider and take all appropriate action on a report from council members Jackie Rasko and Joe McColl on the Administrative Services Agreement in position of Director of Economic Development. Buddy?
Okay, I asked this to be put on the agenda. In our last meeting, I invited y'all to be able to speak to EDC regarding this, however, because of conflict of schedule that can be done, so at least tonight, members of EDC can be able to watch the recording as to your presentation for the need for Director of EDC.
I discussed this back in April, I don't know why you're asking us, me to bring it back up again, nobody agreed. And I would like to make an EDC meeting, it's just, like I said, it's the same Thursdays that I have HOA. So, I did have a first interview with an EDC candidate this evening, and I'm happy to hear that they've gotten, made some changes on the anniversary program for the businesses, as well as they are all independently have a group of businesses that they're going out to. So it sounds like that part's been taken care of a little bit more. I don't know how, how everybody's, how far they've gotten along, but that was just one person, that, you know, she's been to several businesses, that's, that's good. If we can do more on a committee and not have to hire somebody, that'd be great, but it sounded like from back in April when I brought this up, it wasn't happening. We weren't having the businesses, the current businesses were not getting, nobody was calling on them.
And I, I will speak for myself, from my perspective, not for EDC as a whole, but this thing has evolved so much. One of the biggest things that has really impacted EDC and the city as a whole has been 146. And what we're seeing now is the evolution since 146 is now complete, that there's going to be a lot of act, a lot more activity, and especially the outreach. And this is one of the things where EDC has evolved into outreach. And I can refer back twenty years ago, when we hired outside consultants to come in, and we're doing EDC. And where Seabrook is today in terms of development, in terms of buildout, et cetera, that as much effort needs to be put in terms of supporting our existing businesses as, as in attracting new businesses. And what we'll find is, what we're aware of, is that the businesses that we have now, and those that are coming in, they are unique to serve our local community. So one of the things, in talking to the, the businesses that I've heard, there's, there's two issues. One is patronage, and how do we promote patronage? And that's important to all of us. And the other thing is, in terms of staffing, getting qualified people in staffing, and we're in a unique situation with the Bay on one side, industry on the north, we don't have the population that we can just really draw from, plus the fact it's very difficult to draw people from the west side of Houston down here for various jobs. But that's where we are now.
Okay, and my, my original reason I brought this up was, we have, our city manager is acting as the EDC director. And in January of last year, when we were invited to the EDC meeting, it was, that lady, I spoke with her, and she said, there's no other city manager that is the EDC director of any city in the state of Texas, probably anywhere in the country. These are full-time jobs. And it's, it's not trying to poke at anybody, you can't do two full-time jobs. You know, Roger Goodell runs the NFL, he doesn't run, you know, some coffee business, too. He just is the, the head of the NFL. I mean, it's just, that's just what you do. So, yeah, did we save some money? I, I don't know, because if there's more businesses in, maybe that, you know, covers that cost. The other thing is, Paul Dumphy was here, and he gave the report. The other thing I had brought up is, there are supposed to be three reports a year, we've had one, so we're still too short. Per their charter, not my, have, I have no say in that. Their charter says they have to have three reports, we've gotten one. Paul gave it, instead of Gail giving it. Paul said that he was supposed to give it, it wasn't supposed to be you, and it wasn't supposed to be the city manager. Well, for the last seven years I've been on council, Paul Chavez gave every one of them. So, all of a sudden, it just changed? It didn't, we know that it should have been the person who's running EDC. So, th- this is why I bring that kind of stuff up. Of course, I'm looked at like I'm a troublemaker and all that kind of thing, so be it. The point is, I think you need an EDC director, that 146 is complete, yeah, there's been a lot of issues with that, and I brought that up back in 2019, when this whole project started. I talked about my dad's business and how they were going to, how they blocked driveways, that kind of thing happened, and then businesses see that, and they're not going to come to a city that's under construction. Now the construction's over, they see it, I think businesses will start coming, but that's why, hey, we, we just went to the Galveston County Mayors and Councils meeting, and every other city brought their EDC people, and their EDC is a huge part of their city, they're bringing in tons of business. I think Seabrook should be doing the same thing. Now, I want to get something crystal clear, I'm not bashing the EDC committee, I think they do a great job, it's hard work. But what that lady came and talked to us about is how much work it is. That's why someone who's already the city manager can't do both jobs. So, that's my two cents.
If I can, Joe. I, I too was at that meeting, and she spoke in very general terms, and it was generic presentation. She also talked about public transportation, making sure we had an educated workforce, et cetera, which are things way beyond our ability here in Seabrook. And the other thing, too, is, if you'd have been to some EDC meetings, if you and Jackie had attended any, you would have known why we felt that we could eliminate the Director of EDC because of the unique aspect of Seabrook. I mean, if you take right now, every piece of commercial property in this town has got a, a professional broker marketing it. And you can go online, and you can type "commercial properties in Seabrook," it bounces up, and there's all the information on it, the price, who to contact, et cetera. And that's where it really comes down to, as far as attracting new businesses in. And especially today, with the, the internet, AI, it is so easy to go in and say, if I wanted to put in a Schlosskis, I could look and see how many Schlosskis are around, I could look and see how many fast food places are around, I can look at your population, your demographics, your earnings, your age, et cetera. And that's the big change that has occurred. Plus, we are a member of the Bay Area Houston Economic Alliance, it's bringing in the Chamber of Commerce that is promoting this area. So, we, we have all that, and it kind of gets to be redundant. So our focus now in EDC is looking within the city limits, that when somebody comes in, what can we do to help them? Like I said, I've outreach to several people that have, you know, addressed council, I'm currently in conversations with one to identify what we can do to better our support for our local businesses. So I'm, I'm just, you know, again, I would encourage you to attend a couple of EDC meetings, and so you can get it firsthand, and not just from me.
I think, I think part of the issue when we, we let Paul go, was the fact that, you know, Paul was, and, and I'm not going to bash Paul, he's, he's not here anymore. But, you know, we, we, we did contract with a number of outside marketing organizations. Paul attended a lot of, of, of conferences and, and open house type things that, that really weren't set for Seabrook. I mean, they weren't, they weren't doing us any good. In the, in the years that Paul was here, I can specifically say that not one project was brought in, was brought in by Paul. And, you know, the other thing is that, right now, Seabrook is, is land poor, as far as commercial development goes. Most of our commercial properties, like you say, have, have brokers on them, but we, we don't have a whole lot of property to develop at this point. We have some residential, but our biggest pieces of property are up on the north side. And, and, and they're all under private ownership, and, and there isn't a whole lot of property to develop in Seabrook. So, we were paying, you know, upwards of forty, fifty thousand dollars for these outside marketing firms that were just giving us lists of maybes, and not one of them ever came to fruition. And so we didn't see a purpose for having a director, a full-time director, that, that was marketing really nothing, other than sending us this list every month, that, you know, clothing stores and things, they're not coming, I guarantee it. And so, you know, we chased all the grocery stores we could, we chased all the retail establishments, restaurants, and everything else. There is development coming, there's quite a bit of development coming, but they're buying up the properties, the small properties that are leftovers on, on the highway. So, you know, turning around and spending a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year on a, on an EDC director just doesn't make sense as a full-time position. It, 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 it never worked anyway. And Paul was a nice guy, I liked, I, I love Paul, he was, he was a good guy. But he, but to tell you the truth, nothing was coming out of, out of that position. And so, you know, Gail, we asked Gail if she would, you know, step into that position as a part-time, and it was mostly for the books and, and the budget, and keeping the, keeping the, the budget intact. It wasn't as a marketing, we all go out and market. I mean, every one of the person, people on EDC are always marketing, I am always marketing. And, and I feel I've been somewhat successful at it. You know, we have, we have the hotels, and we have the projects at the circle, and, and things like that coming in. And so, those are our last big properties, people, I mean, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but we're pretty land poor. And so, you know, does it make sense for the, for the final couple hundred acres that we have vacant, to hire a full-time marketing director at a hundred and twenty grand a year? Not in my opinion. Anybody else?
Just one thing coming, I, I appreciate Joe and Jackie's comments, and, and I would encourage you, as we go forward, you know, we're all in this together. So, if you've got something new, if you've got a complaint, if you've got an idea, shoot, give me a call.
Sounds good. And I do go back and watch some of the EDC, if there's anything, I mean, I do go back and watch them, so fun. Or listen, I'm sorry.
Okay. There's no action taken on five point. Five point seven, consider and take all appropriate action on the approval of Amendment Number Four to the reallocation of remaining funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, DARPA, funds, and Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2025 CIP Program to approve a contract with Foster Fence for fence replacement at Baybrook Park, Byboard 657-21, and the amount not to exceed twelve thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute all associated documents. Brian?
Within our upper funds, we have multiple projects going on, so there, there were still some remaining funds. We were looking for a project where we could squeeze, that squeeze in and use up those funds, and this is a candidate, this was a candidate.
This is the end of the fund? This the last, last dollar?
There'll be about a thousand dollars left.
Move to approve five point seven.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, where's this, okay, it's at Baybrook Park, but what?
The tennis court and the basketball court, it's not the whole fence, it's going to be the, the face, the fence facing. It's not the whole fence, it's going to be the, the, the face, the fence facing Toddville.
Jackie, what are you talking about?
Anybody else? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Five point eight, consider to take appropriate, all appropriate action on resolution 2024-23, casting its ballot for the election of the person to the board of directors for the Harris County Appraisal District. They changed the way we vote this year on the appraisal. There are, you know, go ahead, how many, how many are there?
I think you're looking at eight.
The city of Seabrook gets five?
Right, you have five votes that you'll be casting from the city of Seabrook.
We get five votes. Where are they? Let me get to the, oh, okay.
Who, who did we support last year?
So earlier?
Sullivan has been our...
It was Mike Sullivan, right? And he has been for years?
Yes.
Is there any reason anybody knows of to change that?
To tell you the truth, I don't know any of the other people.
Then, then I move to cast five ballots for...
And Mike does come to every HCMCA meeting, gives a report, so he...
So I moved to, to cast five ballots for Mike?
Well, let me, well, let me say this. Every council, council member has a, has a vote, we have five votes and we don't have to all vote for the same person this year, is the way they wrote it. Is that correct, Gail? I know it doesn't make sense to individually vote. Yeah?
The city, the city has five votes and the city can cast those five votes, one for five different people or all five for one?
According to the new rules, which makes no sense.
But, but we have ever, always in the past, we've all voted as, as a city to vote for
a single candidate.
Why can't we only get five?
That's, that's just our, they base it on the population. Kind of like our...
I have now.
Yeah, anyway.
Well, I know Mike. Now that you've mentioned he's at the Harris County mayors and councils, I know him.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
Also, if you will make a motion, you're approving the resolution in addition to who you're casting your vote for.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2024-23, casting five ballots for the election of Mike Sullivan to represent the city of Seabrook on the board of directors of the Harris County Central Appraisal District.
Second. All in favor? Thank you. Consider and take all appropriate action on approving the painting of the sails on the mechanically stabilized, the mechanically stabilized earth retaining walls with the city logo at the amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars. Texas Department of Transportation costs in the advanced funding agreement.
Move to approve five point nine.
What color?
That's my question is what color?
And that's why it's on your agenda. Right now, well, we, I, I believe there'll be a little bit of upcharge if we change colors. I don't, I don't think it'll be that much, but Text Dot representative is asking, they're going to have the painters back on the corridor. They have the blue color that we've delineated for the one that's painted out here. So that's, you know, that's their recommendation right now, however, it's up to council.
Well, my suggestion is multiple colors and the reason why is when you see sailboats out in the bay, there's not all the exact same color unless it's little kids sailing with the white sails. So I say multi-color.
Purple and gold.
Scarlet and gray.
We heard a comment earlier from... Suggesting white. I don't have a strong opinion either way, but I'm not necessarily willing to go pay extra to change the color that we already have without knowing how much that would cost. We have blue on there at twenty-one thousand.
Yeah. I agree. I think we, I like the blue personally because that's the color of our logo now, but I, I kind of agree with Joe. If, if there was, depending on how much the cost was, different colors of the sail would really be nice. But the next question is maintaining that because it's going to fade quickly.
Right, I was going to say, it is, it's, right, this is same thing as the landscaping, the agreement that we talked about, as much as we want to maintain it, if we want to, you know, you drive around the Houston area and there's a couple, but they're faded out.
Correct.
So the more colors that we have, probably the higher maintenance that would be.
That's the only issue for me.
My only issue is, is it going to look like a sail once we, once we paint it? We don't know the answer to that. And without seeing something?
Yeah, the blue.
Is it going to look like a sail? That's my question. You know, we don't have any answer to that.
Gail, is it the whole thing or is it just the sails?
Hey, I'm going to go back and pull up.
I think they're talking about the actual sails that are three, there's three...
Different heights.
Different height, no, not that, that's the logo. The sails are the other part. So they're going to pull up a picture now.
Well, we, I always thought that they were going to get painted.
See, I, I was, that's what I thought. The picture showed that they were painted.
Well, you know, they, they pointed out that the picture doesn't really show they're painted. It shows that it's a dark gray and I kind of agree with them, but I thought they were going to be painted at their cost. Do we have, do we have a picture of it?
Yeah.
It almost looks like it's missing.
Yeah, but see, they're, they're paint, they said that they're, they're gray and they were, that's a shadow.
Anyway.
Yeah, there's a, there's a bit of a different texture. If you get real close to these, you'll see it's a different texture. So when we did submit these drawings originally, I think a lot of us saw the logo and assumed that meant paint there and paint on the sails. So this was something that kind of came up after the bid process when they went to paint, that they painted this logo out here and when we asked questions, they were like, it's not in the specifications, so.
Okay, so that's what I'm talking about right here. You got the three sails, sailboats in a sense. One's far away, one's kind of in the middle and one's close up. What, what I'm saying is just paint those some different colors and, you know, and yeah, of course there's, we're already having maintenance for the thing and I actually think it would last over three to five years. And now if you picked yellow, of course yellow's going to fade out really quick, but if you pick some darker colors, you know, like a red, a blue and maybe a green or something like that, I think they're going to last a little longer and, you know, anyway, that's my two cents. And maybe even one of the middle ones could be white if you had the one in the foreground and the one in the background, different colors, the white stands out, you know, so that's another thought.
Red, white and blue?
Correct.
I'm no, I'm no style guy, but I would have a hard time supporting three different colors. White or blue, I could see, I could see leaving them the way they are because the texture makes them stand out pretty well and saving us twenty-one thousand dollars. But I, I, I would not want, you know, blue, green and orange sails up there, definitely not orange. Maybe maroon.
Well, I, I think we've always intended them to be the Seabrook blue color along with our logo. And, you know, a single color I think is, is probably the way to go, my personal opinion. I've always thought they, they were the Seabrook blue, which, which stand, makes Seabrook stand out and so, and I think that's what the bid is right now, right?
Are we not painting the logo then? The logo is definitely not getting painted.
No, the logo is getting painted.
It is getting painted blue.
Yeah.
That's the only thing right now that is in the bid, so the sails would be extra for us to do.
That's the blue paint.
The logo's always been...
Could you, could you at least find this out? If you do the foreground and background in the Seabrook blue, the middle one in white shouldn't be that big of a deal.
The only thing is, remember we have fifty, there, I think there's fifty-five and each wall's a little bit different. So the one depiction that we show right here is just on the really big walls. We have some really small walls that only have one shape or two shapes, so...
Then those would be blue. So only where there's three...
We'd probably come back to let y'all make sure you tell us exactly what y'all want if you want to go in that direction.
We can get them all painted for twenty-one grand, right?
In the blue, yes.
Why don't we just paint them all blue and then get a quote for one white and just paint over it?
I'd rather...
See what it looks like first with all blue.
Well, we would, yeah.
My question is, are they spraying these or are these being painted by hand? Because there's spaces in between the sails. So how, they're not going to spray them.
Right, I mean, there's, there's, I would, I'm actually okay with the way they're textured. I think that the Seabrook logo looks empty like it's not finished and I, I'm glad to hear that we're doing the blue. So I'm kind of neutral on the sails.
Do everything in blue for now.
I'm, I'm, I'm with her. I'm not convinced they need to be painted. I think the logo absolutely should be. I'm not convinced the sails need to be.
I'm totally with Mike Giangrosso on this. I want paint. I want paint on the sails.
And so do I. I, I think, I've always thought that the sails were painted blue.
Yeah. It looks clean, it looks professional, it looks done. I think you need a paint.
And it's in, and it's in the city colors.
And what about doing this? What about putting a poll out there for the people and asking them what color they want? Blue or white? Or colored?
I don't think we've got that kind of time.
Oh, okay. Is there any way we can get a rendition of them and, or I guess we're going to need to make a decision right now?
I will paint.
Me too.
All right. Painted they are.
Okay, we're, we're approving the cost though. We're not approving pink color right now. So do I hear a motion? It's been made on twenty-one thousand? Okay. Okay, all in favor of the amount? Thank you. Six point O Routine Business, six point one, city manager update and report on city council to various items that require no action, including Seabrook boards and commissions, transportation projects, city Seabrook CIP projects.
All right, mayor and council, there it goes. Uh, 146, we've kind of been hanging it along, talking to the Text Dot representative. He's reminded us that these final completion punch lists, walkthrough items are the hardest because they substantially pull out. So they're working with Weber to get all of the last items. I had mentioned, I think, previous meetings, the financial part is, seems like it's going to be harder. So the twenty-one thousand that you've approved, EDC did fund a lot of the aesthetics, they're telling us it could be upwards of 12 months before we financially reconcile all the different line items and understand what may be coming back to the EDC. So the financial part's probably going to be well until next year. However, they're telling us at the end of the year, they should be substantially done and out. 146 Red Bluff Dispenser, hopefully you are getting the information that we're now getting from the other contractor. We'll have a frontage road closure. We had mentioned in previous discussions there at the northbound, when you're going to the Shell Station, there's a really big separation on the asphalt. So they're closing that portion down to fix that. So it'll be the eighth through 6:00 AM on Monday and that will start at 6:00 PM on the eighth. The third lane and MSC wall construction, you can see in that section that's just to the north of the intersection is well underway. If, don't have the full plan set, but remember just as a reminder on this project, we have ramp relocation, so we'll have, the ramp is closed that's up by Geon. All of that gets resituated. We've got sidewalks that will be coming in from Port Road up to the Red Bluff intersection and the intersection again is part of this project. Asked again, and they are making movement. You can see that they cleaned out the detention ponds, they've starting to get that cleaned. Center Point representative reached out. There is a power bank that's inside that intersection right there, the really bad intersection. Center Point's now been out there a couple of times. They have plans to move that power box and that's kind of what Text Dot's waiting on. So the contractor has indicated this is not, that intersection's not the highest priority right now. They're working on the third lanes, so we're still several months out before they'll start that. But again, that's in, in this project and moving ahead. Today, did send you, if you've looked at your emails, just wanted to kind of publicly put this out there. We had been talking to our water and wastewater engineer, Kop Finley, and we were made aware that Harris County was starting to scope a project for Toddville Road that was pretty substantial. Looking at the commissioner's agenda today, we did see that that study did drop, so they are going to be looking at that next Tuesday. Toddville Road Drainage Improvements is how it's listed. Well, obviously we need a lot more information, so we'll come back to council and the public when we get that. They've indicated that there'll be significant public outreach and engagement. They've mentioned that there'll be possible sidewalks, improved drainage, so there'll be an engineering study, environmental study, traffic analysis. And so this is shown in their agreement that was attached to the agenda. It's probably be well into July or August next year, but a substantial project within our city limits. We had a meeting with Text Dot regarding the boat ramp, so they've continued to move forward. They're about sixty percent in design. They did submit, as we talked about, all the permitting requirements to the Corps of Engineers, but it's moving along quite well. They are hoping to have the bid documents ready for next year pending that all of the permits get approved on time, so that project's moving ahead. The pool and community house are two projects that are on your CIP. We are planning to come back next couple of meetings to have the pool in particular. We've got two consultants now on board. We've got the aquatics that you heard from, but we also looked at the two outbuildings that are from 1960s, has restroom facilities and what to do with that. So we've got another architect looking that if you were to look at going out to a bond package to the public, what would your finished product look like? What do you want the entrance to look like? So that we can give you a good estimated cost for a total package rather than just the pool components that we spoke of before. So we're hoping to have two estimated costs to give you a total pool package as we look at, on the 19th, having your financial advisor come back, give you a peek at what we would want to do if we wanted to move forward with a bond package. So those two are, are getting close. Community House is another project on your CIP. We have an in-house vendor, our pre-bid vendor we're looking at with that, so that's still moving ahead and hopefully that we can proceed with the scope of work on that one. Corether's Grading had quite a bit of conversation on this. This was opened this past week and we had no vendors that submitted for that packet. So we've shifted gears. Public Works is now also looking at some of these pre-bid contractors out there to see if we can get a quote to proceed with the project. However, the bid project did not turn up any bidders. Bayside Park was the other project that we've moved quite a bit on this week. We are gearing up to go over to the EDC who agreed to fund the kickoff of the design of this, so we've accumulated a proposal and a cost, taking it over to EDC just to make sure that there's still, as far as a funding mechanism available for that. It'll come back over to city council. We'll look at the scope of the project to make sure that we're all on the same page on that. And it is in the scope of the work heavily emphasized on that we will have a stakeholders' group formed because this will be a brand new park and the concepts will be very important as far as public input and what we've envisioned from the livable center. The EMS and fire station, we've had a couple of meetings since we last met. It's moving along very well. We're at ninety-five percent design drawings, planning to go out to bid in January of 2025. Just to mention a couple of the ARPA projects that Brian was mentioning have come along. So the resurfacing of the basketball court over on Baybrook looks fantastic. This is a concept as the pickleball's curing, so this is just a conceptual drawing once we get the paints picked out. Friendship Park restroom is coming along, so again, if you had the luxury of ever being in there, this is a, a total reconstruction, putting walls in and so it's turning out really nice. The fire training tower for your bond project is also underway. We had to employ geotechnical and also get a civil engineer. I've worked with the fire representative to make sure on the fire training grounds, which is the land that's across from Public Works, where we would place it, looking at drainage, foundations, how that would look in, you know, 10 years if they have additional components they'd like to put on the land. So we're working closely with the fire department and our two consultants now, as well as the prefab company. as well as the prefab company, to get a full plan and come back on that one. Wastewater Treatment Plant, there's some connections, force mains that are still underway. So we're almost there, hoping to get there towards the end of the year. And we've sat through a number of port rail spur projects. So as you can tell, the safety arms for the quiet zones on the frontage roads are fully in. They're working on doing underground wiring to go to the preemption or the boxes underneath the underpass. So there's a lot of electrical work going on right now. We mentioned the frontage road closure, but they will be doing some testing of those arms they mentioned. So they'll give us heads up so that we can alert the community because you'll, we'll have flashing lights, arms going up and down. So we'll make sure that everybody knows that they'll be going through a testing period. Quickly going through our CIP projects, we're still working on the water line connection. That's the old 146 interconnect. We have a bid opening coming up on November 14th and hope to have the recommendation back to council in December. Geon to Red Bluff is another water interconnect. We're pending still with coordination with Pasadena and TechStop. And then Seascape Water Lines has progressed to 80% progression on their plan set. Wastewater, we have lift station number five that's still in design. The wastewater treatment demo, this is working closely. The demo has to happen in coordination with the Bayside and the architect. So what we're taking over to EDC and we'll bring back to December to council is to, one, make sure we have a good team on board that determines, how are we going to handle the restroom facilities? There's two trains of thought. If we leave the existing building where we have Public Works office now, could that be salvaged and could it be a restroom? We don't know. Could there be a floating restroom? So that's part of the scope for the architect. So the wastewater treatment demo is kind of on hold until we get that architect and we can blend the two services to make sure what the concept's going to be. Pine Gully Lift Station, force mains still in design. And grants, we've got one on the network switch, unfortunately, that was declined. Everything else is proceeding in progress. We've had a lot of activity on our generators. Big kudos to our staff and to Kevin Rogers and to finance. This is no small feat to work with TIDAM and FEMA. And they are pulling it out of the park to make sure that this million that is been awarded on a couple of them, we get the other ones and jump through all the hoops that they're requiring. But again, big kudos. It's a great project, great ending, but they're working extremely hard to make sure they're doing everything that's been asked of them. Harris County Partnership, again, this was on the agenda for next Tuesday. So they'll, they're firming up that contract. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a few, not really questions, comments. Sean Landis took care of the Bay Area Veterans Memorial. They put the new wall up. It looks fantastic and the signage is up, very professional, looks great. Says Bay Area Veterans Memorial, crisp, perfect, looks great. Then to Kevin Pagent and his guys, I had brought this up to you, Gail, a couple weeks, maybe, yeah, just a couple of weeks ago, really. The, the gazebo near the, just wasn't looking, just needed some freshening up. Well, not only did they freshen it up, they made it look fantastic. Cut down all the weeds, cut down all the vines that were growing all in it, painted it. It looks fantastic. And then Kevin's guys replaced the 25 flags that council had approved that fly there permanently. They were really tattered, a couple of them were completely ripped. And now there's all brand new 25 flags flying out there. Now they look fantastic. Gotten a lot of compliments. And then the, if you've looked at the memorial, some of the flags look kind of rat, ratty right now, but they're, they're going to replace them for Veterans Day for Monday. So they'll look fantastic. So thank you very much. Looks great.
Anybody else?
Can I just make a couple, or ask you a couple of things while I'm thinking about it? I've been meaning to bring it up. The, because Ed White Trail, I know that they, I forget the word, but they drag the gravel, they do something with the gravel every so often. Is there something on the schedule or?
They compound it?
Maybe.
Okay.
That's what the word is. Where, you know, just kind of, it's like real rough and muddy. And, and then also the signs around, like the street signs that are like missing or bent, like especially around the roundabout. Like, I don't know if they just flew off with that last storm or they're just bent from wrecks. But there's a lot of just poles sticking around.
Public Works is pursuing, they're actually Harris County signs. So they've been pursuing for a really long time. But we can try to turn up the heat a little bit on that.
I just want to make sure that y'all knew about that. And that's all I have until we finish up.
6.2, the monthly financial report through September 2024.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the preliminary September 24 financial report. We're still working on doing some year-end accruals, things of that nature. So these are the unaudited year-end looks as far as where we ended up for the year. I hope, I had hoped to have this on the October meeting, but somehow it got missed. And so I do apologize for that. But I believe y'all have had it a fair amount of time. So I'll kind of just go over where we ended up and take questions that y'all might have. So our general fund, we ended roughly with a $9.3 million fund balance. Enterprise Fund, we ended roughly 2.4 million fund balance. Hot Tax, 1.6 million. The EDC at 3.9 million. And the crime district, just under 1.1 million. I'll be happy to answer any questions y'all have about specific accounts, revenues, expenses.
Any questions? Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. 6.3, establish future meeting dates and agenda items.
Mayor and Council, your next regular meeting is scheduled for November 19th, 2024.
I have a couple of agenda items. Go ahead. Can I, could we get a post-event report for Celebration Seabrook? And that was, I think that's the only thing I had.
Okay, 7.0 Executive Session. 7.1, conduct a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, Personnel Matters, the annual evaluation and performance and duties of the City Secretary. We are in adjournment until, at 7:48?
Council has returned from executive session. No action was taken.
Luke Toit, your turn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye, thanks. Time is 8:27.